Oh, now you're ready. Okay.
I know.
Good evening and welcome to the September 28th, 2015 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order in accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey. Adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 24th, 2015 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmood.
Charlie. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Etifonte? Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dudda?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. If we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have correspondence as is listed in the agenda and we'll start off with the superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. Each year, the Board of Education has an opportunity to meet all of our new staff that we appoint during this school year. Very special year. We had over 2,800 applicants for positions in the 15-16 school year. Truly extraordinary. We hired about 100 people for 100 different positions in the district, including co-curricular and athletic activity. But tonight, we're going to meet our new teachers and it's great to see so many people in the audience. And maybe Kaz, you can kind of feed back through. Wave hi to the people on the camera. There you go. Our new staff here in Hillsborough. Let's give them a big round of applause. Starting us off tonight with introductions is the principal of Hillsborough High School, Ms. Karen Binger.
Good evening, everyone. It is truly my pleasure to welcome all of our new staff members this year and I would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to everyone from Hillsborough High School. It's quite a large group, so what I'm going to ask is for all of the new Hillsborough High School staff members to come on up, line up to my right, and when I call your name, wave and smile for the camera. Come on up and line up. Those of you at home may want to grab a snack. First, it's my pleasure to introduce Paula Cassius, who is joining us at Hillsborough High School and Hillsborough Middle School. Mrs. Cassius is joining our Family and Consumer Science Department. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Economics from Lake Forest College and has done additional coursework at Kendall College, Nassau Community College, and Iowa State University. Previously, she taught culinary arts at Old Bridge High School. Paula Cassius. Danielle DePiri is joining us as a special education teacher, highly qualified in Spanish. Danielle is joining us, having earned her Master of Arts in Elementary and Special Education and her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish and Psychology from Rutgers University. Prior to joining us, she did her student teaching at Three Bridges Elementary School. Danielle DePiri. Karen Delolo is joining us as a chemistry teacher. She has her Master of Science in Curriculum and Instruction from the University of Scranton and her Bachelor of Science in Chemistry from Cabrini College. Ms. Delolo is joining us, having been a chemistry teacher at Bridgewater-Raritan High School prior to this. Karen Delolo.
I just ask that our new teachers, please step forward so we can get a picture of you as we announce your name. Thank you.
Jennifer Frounberger is joining our Social Studies Department. Ms. Frounberger has her Bachelor of Arts in History and Secondary Education from the College of New Jersey. Prior to joining us, she did her student teaching at South Hundredan High School and Bordentown High School. Julian Gioli has joined our English Department with her Bachelor of Arts in English and Secondary Education from the College of New Jersey. She was an English teacher at Ridge High School and William Anan Middle School before becoming a Raider. Julian Gioli. Jessica Haygood has joined our Family and Consumer Science Department. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and Family and Consumer Sciences from the University of South Florida. Prior to joining us, she was a first grade teacher at Forest Hills Elementary School in Hillsborough, Florida, and has been a substitute in New Jersey. We actually get confused for Hillsborough, Florida, pretty often, so hopefully Ms. Haygood finds her way to school every day. Welcome, Jessica Haygood. Kevin Hodgulick has joined our Math Department. He has a Bachelor of Arts in Math and Secondary Education from TCNJ and prior to being with us, he taught math at Piscataway High School. Kevin Hodgulick. Derek Jones is joining us as a physics teacher. He has his PhD in Physics from Rutgers University and his Bachelor of Science in Physics from TCNJ. And prior to joining us, he was a teaching assistant at Rutgers University. Derek Jones. Micah Kirk is joining us as our new teacher of German. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from the University of Stuttgart and her Master's of Educational Leadership from Rowan University. Prior to joining us here, she taught at Williamstown Middle School as a grade 6 through 8 German teacher. Micah Kirk. Robert Kombatovic is joining our Health and Physical Education Department. He has his Bachelor of Arts in Physical Education from Hofstra University and prior to joining us as a teacher, he was a long-term substitute for us at HHS and he is an HHS alum and we're always happy to have those come back and join us full-time. So, congrats and welcome, Robert Kombatovic. Karen Quitniak is joining our English Department as a long-term substitute. She has her Master's of Arts in Educational Instruction from Gratz College and her Bachelor of Arts from Marymount Manhattan College. Prior to joining us, she was a long-term sub in English at Hundredan Central Regional High School. Karen Quitniak. Kimberly Loesch is joining us in the Information and Communication Technology Department. Mrs. Loesch has her MBA and BS in Business Education from Rider University. She was a long-term substitute in the Information and Communication Technology Department at Hillsborough High School, off and on, mostly on, for about the last two years, so she's now officially with us full-time and we are thrilled. Kim Loesch. Sorabi Marath has joined our Science Department as a long-term substitute. She has her Master's of Arts in Educational Psychology from Rutgers and her MS in Biotechnology and Bachelor of Science in Human Biology and Biophysics from the All India Institute of Medical Sciences. Prior to joining us, she was a long-term substitute in Biology, Anatomy, and Physiology at Hundredan Central Regional High School. Matthew Moscow has joined our Social Studies Department as a teacher. He has his Bachelor's of Science in Secondary Education and Social Studies and his Master's of Arts in Reading from the University of Scranton. Mr. Moscow is joining us as an HHS alum, which, as I said before, makes us very happy. He has also been a baseball coach with us and he has been a substitute with us for a while and now he's full-time in our Social Studies Department. Welcome, Matthew Moscow. Christos Papadopoulos is joining us in our Applied Technology Department. Mr. Papadopoulos has his Bachelor's of Science in Technology Education from the College of New Jersey. He did his student teaching at Montgomery Middle School and Hamilton High School West. Welcome, Christos Papadopoulos. Lauren Rankin is joining our English Department as a teacher. Ms. Rankin has her Master's of Arts in Secondary English Education from the College of New Jersey and her Bachelor of Arts in Film Studies from Wellesley College. Prior to coming here, she was here. She did her student teaching with us and we are very happy to bring her back as a full-time teacher. She is also the director of the a cappella singing group at the Hun School of Princeton. Teresa Romano is joining our Math Department, I'm sorry, rejoining our Math Department. Teresa has her Bachelor's of Science in Mechanical Engineering and her Master's of Arts in Secondary Education from the College of New Jersey. Mrs. Romano is returning to us, having taught math at the high school, then leaving to raise her family. That was about 10 or 12, 11 years ago?
Fourteen.
Fourteen years ago, okay. And I've been around a long time because it's all a blur to me. Welcome back, Teresa Romano. Kimberly Schelus is joining our Health and Physical Education Department. She has her Bachelor's of Science in Health and Exercise Science from the College of New Jersey and prior to joining us, she was a Health and Physical Education teacher at Timberlake Middle School and Central High School in the Hopewell Valley Regional School District. Kimberly Schelus. Jessica Stibbets is joining our Special Education Department, highly qualified in Science. She has her Bachelor of Arts and her Teaching Certification from TCNJ. She is working on her Master's of Arts in Special Education at New Jersey City University. She, prior to joining us, was a science teacher at Somerset County Educational Services Commission and, thank you, and welcome, Jessica Stibbets. Is she behind me, Mr. Beal, and is that what you're trying to tell me?
There she is.
All I saw were hands going like this. Annarala Valdevia. Did Annarala get the job? There she is. I didn't see her sneak in. Annarala is joining us, or will be joining us shortly. She's still under contract as a school psychologist in North Plainfield School District, but she will be joining us as a new school psychologist on our child study team sometime in mid-October. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology and her Master of Arts in Theoretical Psychology from Fairleigh Dickinson. Her psychological doctorate in School Clinical and Child Psychology, well, she's actually working on that anticipated in 2016, from Yeshiva University. And we're thrilled that she could join us tonight, even though she has not yet officially started with us. Aoin Winchester has joined us as a long-term substitute in English. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Secondary Education from TCNJ and was a long-term substitute at Hillsborough High School before returning to join us again this year as a long-term sub. Aoin Winchester. Melissa Zarinsky is joining us as a long-term substitute in Special Education. And if you're behind me, just step out so everybody can see you. And then I'll have to figure out what this means again. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology and her Master's of Arts in Special Education from Kane University. Prior to joining us, Mrs. Zarinsky was a middle school Special Education and English Language Arts teacher in Bedminster. Sherry Hoppy has joined us in the Math Department. She has her Master's of Arts in Educational Leadership from Grand Canyon University and her Bachelor of Arts in Math from Rider University. Prior to joining us, she was at Rabino Academy as the academic coordinator. She was unable to be with us this evening, but we welcome Sherry Hoppy. We also welcome two other people who joined us last year, right at the beginning of the year, but did not have the opportunity to be introduced to the board. Unfortunately, neither of them could be with us this evening, but I want to acknowledge Michael Knapp in our English Department, who has his Bachelor of Arts in English from the College of New Jersey. And as I said, he started with us, I believe it was day one last year. And prior to that, he was a classroom aide for students with multiple disabilities at Midland School in Branchburg. And Elizabeth Shenack, who joined our Special Education Department last year. She has her EDM in Social Studies from Rutgers University. She was a long-term sub at Hillsborough High School and a student teacher at Lawrence High School before joining us. It's a huge class, but it is a wonderful group of professional educators and I'm so excited to have all of them join us tonight. It has been truly my honor to welcome them and to introduce them to the Board of Education. Welcome to the new class for Hillsborough High School. And without further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Joseph Trabowski for Hillsborough Middle School. Thank you.
And, like the high school, if I could have all the new staff for Hillsborough Middle School, please join me up here in front of the cake and cookies. So, go a little bit faster. Nice. It's my pleasure to introduce the new teaching staff for Hillsborough Middle School this year, starting with Nick Angressani. Nick joins us as a special education teacher for Team 7D. He has his Bachelor's Degree in General Science, Elementary, and Special Education from Kane University. Got his Master's Degree while studying abroad at the University of Nottingham in Educational Leadership and most recently completed his student teaching internship with the Union Township Public Schools. Welcome aboard, Nick Angressani. Paula Cassius just took her seat. She was introduced a moment ago with the high school. She's working with both the high school and the middle school for Family and Consumer Science. So, welcome again, Paula, to our school as well. Dan, oh, okay, yeah, another round of applause for Paula. Danielle Hanna. Danielle joins us as a special education teacher on Team 7A. She has her Bachelor's Degree in History from Rutgers University and her Master's, also from Rutgers, in Elementary and Special Education. Did her student teaching internship in Cherry Hill Public Schools. And I'm always very proud to introduce Danielle because we share the same hometown of Barrington, New Jersey. So, a plug for Barrington. Welcome Danielle Hanna. Catherine Keel. Catherine joins us, actually is returning to us. She joined us last spring in a long-term leave replacement position, but now with us permanently is a special education teacher for our LLD Mild Program in 7th Grade. She has her Bachelor's Degree in English Literature from Rutgers University. Her Master's Degree also from Rutgers in Elementary and Special Education, as I mentioned, was with us last year and did a beautiful job. So, happy to have Catherine Keel back with us again. Megan McCarthy. Megan joins us as a Social Studies teacher for Team 7D. She has her Bachelor's Degree from Rutgers University in History, also earned her Master's Degree from Rutgers in Social Studies Education. Had most recently been teaching Special Education and Social Studies with Pond Road Middle School in Robbinsville from about 2011 until very recently and we're really happy to welcome her to Hillsborough Middle School as a Social Studies teacher. Megan McCarthy. Pamela Mishdal. Pamela joins us as our school psychologist. She has her Bachelor's Degree, also from Rutgers University, in Psychology. Completed her Educational Specialist in School Psychology Master's Program at Rider University. Worked the last two years, did her internship, and also worked for Bridgewater-Raritan Public Schools as their school psychologist. And we're really happy to have her aboard as our school psychologist. Susanna Montano. Susanna joins our Team 7A as a science teacher. She has her Bachelor's Degree in Integrated Math, Science, and Education from William Patterson University. Did her student teaching in Patterson Public Schools, but then most recently was a long-term leave replacement for 8th Grade Science in Milburn Schools and now is aboard with us here at Hillsborough Middle School. One individual couldn't be here this evening. That's Kendall Petshower. Kendall is joining us as a guidance counselor. Kendall was also with us last spring. She began as a long-term leave replacement guidance counselor. Her Bachelor's Degree from the Catholic University of America and earned her Master's Degree in Counseling through Monmouth University. And we're really happy to have Kendall aboard, although she couldn't be here this evening with us tonight. Kate Rousseau. Kate joins us as a science teacher on Team 7E. She has her Bachelor's Degree from Rutgers University in Natural Resource Management. Her Master's of Science in Geology and Geography from Mississippi State University. She had recently been teaching for the last 10 years, 11 years, pardon me, with Madison School District as a 7th Grade Science teacher. Hillsborough is her hometown and is thrilled to be working for Hillsborough Middle School as a science teacher. Welcome aboard, Kate Rousseau. Also hometown vintage, Laura Schneider joins us as a math teacher on Team 7A. She has her Bachelor's Degree in Psychology, Mathematics, and Elementary Ed through Kane University. Began her teaching a long time ago, a little bit, in Flemington-Raritan School District. Took time off with her family and has now joined Hillsborough Middle School as our 7th Grade Math Teacher. Laura Schneider. And finally, if I'm not mistaken, Betsy Valenza. Betsy joins us as a French teacher at the middle school. She has her Bachelor's Degree in French Language and Literature through the University of Delaware. Most recently was teaching French at Ocean Township High School and is now aboard with us at Hillsborough Middle School, teaching French. Betsy Valenza. My thanks to all the new staff and certainly welcome to all the new teachers in Hillsborough Township. And it's my pleasure to bring up Mr. Chris Carey on behalf of Autton Road Intermediate School.
I don't have to say a word. I have them trained. They just come up. So, as the wonderful Autton Road staff is getting into place, I just wanted to extend also a congratulations once again to all the new teachers. Hopefully, things are getting a little bit easier for you settling in. And again, we have a wonderful group here at Autton Road. I'll start with the two teachers who are not here this evening. They could not make it. At Autton Road, we have Vanessa Medina. Vanessa is autism teacher at Autton Road. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education and a specialization in Middle School Social Studies and also a Master's Degree in Special Ed from Kane University. Actually, at this time, the reason why Vanessa's not here is she's still with the Franklin Township Board of Ed. We hope to have her in a couple of weeks. And also, what's nice is Vanessa is a resident of Hillsborough and also a Hillsborough alumni. The other individual who cannot be here this evening is Cindy McNella. Cindy actually started with us last spring, actually about midpoint last year, as our ESL teacher. She has both a Bachelor's Degree and Master's Degree from the College of New Jersey. And again, she is also a resident of Hillsborough. So, Cindy McNell. So, for those who are in front now, we'll start with Steve Timko, goes by Hunter Timko. We'd like to welcome, well, for Hunter, he actually started with Autton Road last spring with us and now he's with us, of course, full-time. He's with us as a Health and PE teacher. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Health and Phys Ed from West Virginia University. He's also a Hillsborough resident and a Hillsborough alumni. So, Hunter Timko. Next, we have Nick Calachico. Nick is also with our Health and PE Department. Nick is with us as a full-year, long-term sub. He was with us also last year, half the year, so we're happy to have him back with us. Nick is actually serving as the assistant soccer coach for the middle school. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Health and PE from Rowan University. He, too, lives in Hillsborough and he is an alumni of Hillsborough High. Welcome, welcome to you, Nick. Next, we have Jayman Lee. Jayman is with us as a grade 6 Science and Social Studies teacher. She comes to us from Arizona, where she worked in the Phoenix and Scottsdale area, teaching a variety of grade levels 6 through 8 and kindergarten 1st and 4th. She has a Bachelor of Foreign Arts Degree from Cornell University, a Master of Fine Arts, and a Master of Science Degree from Pratt Institute in Brooklyn, New York. And she also has a post-baccalaureate in Teacher Certification from Scottsdale Community College. Jayman Lee. Next, we have Kristen Sprafford. Kristen is with us as a grade 5 Math and Science teacher. She has a Bachelor of Science Degree in Elementary Education from the College of Charleston in South Carolina. And she recently completed a long-term sub for us last spring at Autton Road and we're so happy to have her back. So, Kristen Sprafford. Lauren Zapla. And I'll say this first. Lauren and I, as Dr. Trabowski had, we share the same hometown as well, Garwood, New Jersey. Go Mustangs! So, welcome to Lauren. Lauren is with us as a grade 5 Math and Science teacher. She has a Bachelor's and Master's Degree from Rutgers University. And her undergraduate degree is in Psychology. Her Master's Degree is Elementary Ed with a specialization in Math. And she most recently spent the year in the Summit School District as an Inclusion Aid. So, Lauren Zapla, welcome. Next, we have Brianna Morgan. There's Brianna. Brianna is also with us, a grade 5 Math and Science teacher. She has a Bachelor of Science Degree in Elementary Ed and a specialization in Middle School Math from the University of Delaware. And prior to her time, prior to coming to Autton Road, she completed her student teaching last year in Maryland. So, there's Brianna Morgan. Next, we have Evelyn Casperson. Evelyn is with us as a long-term sub for almost nearly the full year. She just started about a week ago or so. She is with us as a grade 6 ASI Math teacher. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Ed and Integrated Math and Science from Rider University. And prior to her arrival to Autton Road, she is with the Somerville School District and is a specialist teacher at the middle school. Evelyn is also a resident of Hillsborough and an alumni as well. Welcome, Evelyn Casperson. I will say welcome, but really, it's not really welcome anymore. You guys have been here for a month, but if I say it, you know what I mean. Next, we have Sarah Young. There's Sarah. Sarah is with us as an in-class resource teacher in grade 5. She, for the majority of the 2014-15 school year, she was with Woodford Elementary School as a 4th Grade self-contained mild classroom. She has both a Bachelor's Degree and Master's Degree from Rutgers University. And her Bachelor's Degree is in Psychology and she has a Master's in Elementary Ed and Special Education. Sarah Young. And that's it. Thank you very much for your time. Once again, you guys are fantastic. Keep working hard and congratulations again to all the new staff in Hillsborough. And I'd like to now introduce the principal of Amsterdam Elementary School, Dr. Maryam
Good evening. Amsterdam School would like to welcome the four teachers who are unable to be with us here this evening. Janay Saliba, who will be teaching 1st Grade. Samantha Shurik, who's our part-time kindergarten teacher. Lisa Bradus, who will be teaching ASI. And Emily Campesano, who is teaching Transitional Primary. But here with us this evening is Erica Labcheck. And Erica Labcheck is joining us as a long-term sub Wilson teacher. She received her Bachelor of Science in Music Vocal Performance from Adelphi University in New York. She then went on to receive her Master's of Arts in Special Education from Caldwell University. She's certified in K-5 Education. She's also certified as teacher of students with disabilities. She comes to us from Summit Public Schools, where she taught 5th Grade as a basic skills instructor teacher and was an inclusion aid. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Eckstein from the principal of Hillsborough
Good evening. It is my honor as the principal of Hillsborough Elementary School to introduce our new Hillsborough Elementary School stars faculty members. First, I'd like to welcome, actually, welcome home as well, Jason Jenkins, who is an HES alum and a resident of Hillsborough as well. Jason joins our Health and PE Department. He earned his BA from Rowan University and comes to us with experience as a PE teacher from Princeton Elementary School as well as Carrier Clinic. Amanda Sampson is joining us as a long-term sub on our 3rd Grade Team. She earned her Bachelor of Science from Bloomsburg University with a focus on language arts. Amanda has previous experience as an LTS in Bridgewater and Flemington School Districts. However, lucky for us, there was no position open for her at the end of her term. I'm very excited to welcome these two new teachers to our district. Not only are they dedicated educators, but even in the glimpse of an interview, I could quickly see that they adore working with children and would exemplify our school motto for the 2015-16 school year. HES, where good character and kindness shine through. Thank you and welcome. I would like to introduce Steve Carrigan, the principal of Woodford School.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Would all of the Woodford, all of you, come on up. Yes, that's good. Thank you. This year, I'm proud to present two very, very special people who've joined the Woodford family. We have Samantha Convery, who is a graduate of William Patterson University. She joins us as a long-term sub in our LLD kindergarten classroom and comes to us with experience as a lead preschool teacher and a kindergarten inclusion classroom teacher. We also have Andrea Jansky. Andrea is a graduate of Fairleigh Dickinson University. She comes to us with experience in grades 1 through 4 and as an intervention specialist. She's a long-term sub in our grade 4 classroom and in keeping with the theme for the evening, she is also a Hillsborough alum. Welcome, Andrea. I'd now like to call up Mrs. Jody Howe, principal of Woods- I'd now like to call up Mrs. Jody Howe, principal of Woods Road Elementary.
Thank you. Could the Woods Road crew come on down? We have a little more than Steve. At this time, I'd like to introduce Beth King-Kiner. After 20 years in the business field, Ms. King-Kiner went back to Rider University and received her graduate teacher certification. She previously earned her bachelor of science in finance and MBA. She has joined Woods Road School as a second-grade teacher. She comes from the Ewing Public Schools, where she taught second grade, fifth grade, early intervention, and was also a basic skills teacher. Welcome, Beth King-Kiner. Next, I'd like to welcome Peter McLaughlin. Mr. McLaughlin joins our third-grade team. Peter previously taught first grade at St. Paul's Catholic School in Princeton for the last four years, where he was also the athletic coordinator. Mr. McLaughlin is a graduate of the University of Rhode Island with a degree in elementary education and psychology. Peter McLaughlin, welcome. Next, in the Woods Road family, we'd like to welcome Ms. Crystal Ramos. Ms. Ramos is a graduate of the College of New Jersey with a bachelor of arts in elementary education, science, and elementary mathematics. She joins our fourth-grade team this year, and she has experienced teaching grade three as well as grade five, basic skills, math, and art in the Flemington School system and the Lawrence Township Public School system. Welcome, Crystal. Next, we have Renee Moya. Mrs. Moya joins our kindergarten team part-time in the afternoon. She previously worked as an instructional assistant in our preschool program. She has 10 years' teaching experience in the kindergarten area as well as experienced teaching second and third grades. She holds a bachelor's degree from William Patterson and a master's from Keene University. Ms. Moya took time off from teaching to raise her two children. Welcome, Ms. Moya. Next, we have Brittany Vangeli. Ms. Vangeli joins our special education resource room literacy lab. Brittany was previously an instructional assistant in our integrated preschool program at Woods Road School as well as working in the district extended school year program. Ms. Vangeli is a graduate of Rider University, and she holds a bachelor's in education with a minor in special education. Welcome, Brittany. Next, we have Samantha Finnegan. Ms. Finnegan is really not new to us. Last year, she spent the entire year with us as a long-term sub in second grade. However, this year, she joins us as a third-grade teacher. She's a graduate from Rutgers University with a BS in nutritional science and a minor in professional youth outreach. She received her teaching certification through the alternate route at Rutgers Center for Effective Teaching. Welcome, Samantha Finnegan. And next, we have Lauren Fukaloro. Lauren joins us as a long-term sub in our preschool autism program. She is a graduate of East Stroudsburg University with a dual degree in early childhood and special education. She completed her student teaching in second grade and as well as in an autistic support class in East Stroudsburg, Pennsylvania. Welcome, Lauren Fukaloro. And number eight, Andrea Escobar joins us as a long-term sub in grade one. Andrea completed her student teaching at Woods Road last year in third grade, and she also served as an instructional assistant in Woods Road School's preschool program. Andrea is a graduate of Bloomfield College. Welcome, Andrea. Next, we have Ian Steggi. Mr. Steggi joins us as our school music teacher. He's a graduate from the Sundeman Conservatory of Music at Gettysburg College. He graduated with a BS in music education with a concentration in upright bass. However, he has a variety of instruments that he does play, such as piano and guitar. The kids just love it. And also, I'd like to share that he did beatboxing in his demo lesson. And it was quite impressive. Mr. Steggi comes to us from the Red Bank Charter School. Welcome, Mr. Steggi. And last but not least, she hasn't started yet. She'll start November 30th, a long-term sub, Jennifer Cartahina. She'll be joining us as the school's art teacher. She's a graduate of the College of New Jersey with a bachelor's degree in art and education with a minor in graphic design. She previously taught at the Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, Woodford School, Sunnymead School, and the Highland Park School. So welcome, Jennifer. And thank you, everyone, and welcome. Have a great year. At this time, I would like to welcome back Ms. Karen Binger, principal of the Hillsborough High School.
Thank you very much. In addition to being the principal of Hillsborough High School, I am also the vice president and immediate past president of the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. And in my role as such, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Jordan Schiff, who has been named the Somerset County Superintendent of the Year by the New Jersey Association of School Administrators. Congratulations, Dr. Schiff.
You got it twice.
Thank you very much. That was very kind. One of the most important things that we do as administrators in a school district is make a decision about who will be educating the children in this community. The people who are in the audience tonight have distinguished themselves through their scholarship, through their experience, through multiple levels of interviews, even a demonstration lesson, as well as writing samples, too. I mean, there's a lot of hoops that the ladies and gentlemen in this audience had to jump through to be the few that we have brought onboard this year out of close to 3,000 applicants. Truly extraordinary. I'd like to recognize all the principals that did a nice job introducing. Let's give them a big round of applause. And I'd like to save our greatest applause for all of our new staff that's here tonight. Welcome to our family. We're so proud to have you. Thank you. I'd like to ask the board for a brief recess. We have a cake that we baked in honor of our new staff. We hope that you can stay for a few minutes to meet some of the members of the board and enjoy a slice of cake with us.
Okay, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back from recess. That concludes this superintendent's report. Now moving on to approval of minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the August 24, 2015 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Obstein.
Okay, motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the August 24, 2015 public meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Obstein.
Got you. Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, we have committee reports, and I believe we have two. We have education, Mrs. Haas, and operations, but we'll start with education committee. Mrs. Haas.
Okay. The education committee met on September 22nd, and I apologize to the board because I didn't see these minutes until Sunday night. But we discussed some things and other things that are, in these minutes, are a little bit strange. Starting with the strategic plan, I would ask that the minutes be edited to eliminate the first five items, which were not discussed at my meeting, but may have been discussed at another meeting. I don't know if you want me to go through what our discussion was, but we talked about expanding technology so that elementary schools have take-home devices. We discussed having, developing a model for virtual classrooms to be used during emergency closing situations. We talked about broadly a concept of innovation labs where kids could use their innovative selves to come up with ideas and creations that they're, you know, to fulfill their innovation interests. We also discussed having courses for non-college-bound students who might be joining a family-owned business where they could take classes in entrepreneurship and financial issues that they would be dealing with in a business. And we talked about classes on ethics, philosophy, and resiliency. We also adopted a new textbook for mathematics, Algebra III, and trigonometry for college readiness. Excuse me. We approved three new novels, Henry IV, Part 1 and 2, and Wuthering Heights by Emily Bronte. There wasn't any objection to any of those. We discussed a new and exciting, I think, new class introduction to engineering principles. This would be an honors class in grades 11 and 12 at the high school. And this would generally talk about thought processes involved in engineering, the ultimate STEM class, the thought process, the principles of engineering. Very introductory, but hopefully, we can do more in that area. We reviewed the administration of medication policy with our school nursing supervisor, Lorraine Borak. And we also discussed the screening for dyslexia policy. And basically, our policies are there to minimize risk. They are consistent with the law, and we will continue to raise awareness on these issues and minimize risk as much as possible. But our current procedures, we find, are consistent with the law and best practices. And regardless of whatever a policy says, every child in our district is entitled to have an individual healthcare plan. This is an available option for kids who have particular needs. On the dyslexia policy, it was shared with us that this is our second year that we've given training on dyslexia, and we continue to provide more resources than what is required by law. We'll continue to look at additional screenings if necessary and continue to train teachers. So we talked a little bit about payment for nurses on school trips. And our district policy doesn't allow students to self-administer medication, but Mrs. Borak shared that this was legal, actually. And we have run into a couple of trips where it was very costly to include a nurse on overnight trips, and we have been looking for other solutions in that area. So the administration was going to follow up on that and review which of our trips are an integral part of the curriculum. And that's basically it for the education committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Operations committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Operations committee met last week. We brainstormed some ideas for a strategic plan, but we didn't spend too long on that. We also took a quick look at two policies. One, school policy called school nutrition programs. It's just a renaming of the policy that used to be called free and reduced-rate meals. The policy changes were basically just some language changes, no substantive changes. And the second policy is something new, a new required policy called outstanding food service charges. It outlines what you do when a child comes to school with no money left in their account, basically, and will they be served lunch? And the policy has a couple of options that boards can choose or districts can choose to do. Our choice is to continue to feed the kids lunch, no matter, you know, how long it's been there. Some of the things in the policy were, you know, after eight, you know, do you wait for eight days? And then stop feeding them? Do you immediately stop feeding them? And ours was, our choice was, we're going to follow up with the parent. We don't have this problem in our district generally. And if we did somehow past eight days, we would follow up and find a solution. We're not going to let any kid be hungry. So that dispensed with the policies. We spent most of the time at the meeting, meeting with, well, we had two major topics. One was some very good news. I'll start with the good news. They're both real, well, one is good, one is not so great. The good news was that, as you know, our, we had been, we've been planning for many months, maybe a year, two major construction projects. One is the redoing the synthetic athletic turf field at the high school, refurbishing that. And the other one is to repave with some other additional work the middle school parking lot. The plan has always been to make a deposit into our capital reserve account to cover 60% of the cost of those two projects, and then to take a one-year note and apply for state aid debt service relief for the other 40%. As you may recall, a couple of months ago, we had some new numbers on those projects, and the cost was significantly higher than we first looked at the project. So we had some trepidation. We were not sure whether we would have enough excess surplus at the end of the year to put enough into the capital reserve to cover our 60%. Okay, that's a long way of saying that the good news is the auditor has finished the books, closed it out. We have enough in excess surplus to make a deposit sufficient to add to what is already in capital reserve to cover the 60% needed to fund those projects. So on tonight's agenda, I believe, there's a resolution to deposit up to $1 million of our excess surplus into the capital reserve, added to what we already have in there, that will not only be able to cover 60% of the cost of the two major projects, but also leave a couple of hundred thousand dollars in our capital reserve account. As you recall, last year, the capital projects account was essentially zero. The only capital projects we did were through the ESIP program. So this would leave some money in the capital reserve account. When we do budget planning starting next month or so, we will be able to actually do some projects this year. I know board members always want to be able to do something with the schools and decry the fact that we had zero outside of the ESIP program last year. So that's all very good news. We also took a look, in conjunction with this, our architect, Greg Samchin, was at the meeting, as well as his assistant and the engineer. And we took a look at the plans for the paving at the middle school. As you know, the plans were for to repave, correct drainage issues, and to shore up a small piece of retaining wall on the west side of the parking lot. Also in that project was a reconfiguration of the traffic circulation for parent drop-off. And after looking at the plans, I'm very pleased to say that the solution is modest, does not change the footprint of the parking lot or change anything in any major way, but indeed will improve the circulation of the parent drop-off. It adds a fencing so that kids cannot run from any part of the parking lot right across the drive up to the sidewalk at the school. They have to go only to the crosswalks. It was a very good plan and modest in the sense that it doesn't require any more curb cuts onto Triangle Road or any increase in the impervious surface coverage or anything like that. So we're very happy about that. The other major, I said there were two major things we talked about. The other one was an update on the effects of the Affordable Care Act. The Affordable Care, some of the consequences of the Affordable Care Act going to affect January 1, 2018, but it's not too early to start thinking about what those will be. We had Brian Reiser and Mary Costanzo from our insurance advisors, Brandon Brown. They were at the meeting with us. So in a nutshell, what we learned was that there are a lot of compliance... So in a nutshell, what we learned was that there are a lot of compliance issues, first of all, with showing that all of your employees actually are being offered health care and insurance, and to what level they're being offered it. Is it up to the standards? And there's a lot of compliance. And as you know, we do most of our payroll things through System 3000, which at this point does not completely handle all of the aspects required for the, for the compliance and reporting. So administration is working on some solutions. The Systems 3000 people are also working on solutions. They promised that by 2018, they'll have a solution. We kind of need one now. The other, the other thing we discussed was the big impact of the, I don't want to call them like fees or charges, what would you call that?
Taxes.
Taxes or additional charges and, yeah, taxes that come from having employees on what they defined as Cadillac plans. So I thought we got rid of Cadillac plans years ago when we eliminated the traditional plan. Well, according to the definitions, something like 60% of our employees would technically, right now, be on the Cadillac plan because of the, of the level of, of the premium level that they have. So that, that presents a problem. We don't know exactly how it will manifest itself, whether it's going to be, and Brandon Brown did not know either, whether it's just going to be increased premiums or the insurance companies are going to charge us in some other way or some entity is going to charge us. But it, it could come out to hundreds of thousands of dollars if we don't figure out, or if there's not a change. It's really going to be something like, and I don't have it in my minutes, I'm sorry, but I think they said something like over $300,000 in fees for Cadillac plans. So they're monitoring it. They're going to keep us informed all the way through. And I think that's about it, right? The only, the thing administration is going to, I have it in my notes, administration will present a plan to meet the reporting requirements in the near future, and that's basically where we have left it.
May I just add?
Yes, please do.
One quick thing. There's, there is now a reporting requirement that is due, I believe, February 1st at the end of January. And that reporting requirement is similar to doing another W-2 for every single employee, another tax form.
Yes, that's a better way to look at it, yeah.
For every single employee. What, what I think concerns all of us is that our healthcare insurance provider has indicated that each form may take up to 12 minutes to complete. We have 1,000 employees that will receive something like that.
200 hours.
So if that, if that is true, that is an exorbitant amount of time, that we would need additional help and assistance from there. The, it's a new process. We're all kind of learning it together, but it may require additional resourcing in order for us to get the information out in a timely way. And what we promised the Operations Committee is that administration will come with a plan of how to, to do that, to make sure that we complete all the compliance requirements of the Affordable Care Act. But this is new. And by the way, every district in New Jersey is going to be going through, through a similar process and possibly in the entire country is going to be doing something similar. But it's basically, we verify that we have provided affordable health care to our employees through this form that looks like a tax form, basically.
And we examined, Operations Committee, we examined the forms, and there's, it's like filling out a tax form, another tax form for each employee. And it cannot be, at this time, it cannot be populated automatically through Systems 3000. The, you know, the boxes can't be, is that the right word, populated?
Yeah.
I don't know, whatever. They can't be filled, filled in. You know what I'm saying?
So although that, this Cadillac tax comes into effect January of 2018, this compliance is starting now.
Starting now.
And we have to complete this, this process prior to February 1st.
Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, forgive me for questioning this, but you know, honestly, when we were asked to buy into System 3000, it was because technology was going to make everything so much easier. And when we were asked to buy into having a health benefits consultant, that was because they were going to make our lives easier. Why is there no macro solution to this if every district has System 3000 and every district faces the same problem? Why does each district individually have to solve the problem for themselves? This should be solved on a macro level statewide or by the Systems 3000 provider for the price of what they're charging us.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think they've had, they've known what the form looks like or had the technical, you know, aspects of it for long, right? This just, this is brand new, just came out now? Am I wrong?
Right. But, but didn't you, didn't you just report out that Systems 3000 is going to be working on a solution and make it take some time?
Yes, they're working on a solution, but we need, we need, but as we said, Operations Committee-
This is a compliance requirement with the new healthcare law that's now taking effect, and now we're getting impacted by it. It's, it's an additional tax form that needs to be, that we need to submit to.
Just like taking out social security and just like taking out, you know, various other deductions that the system does.
It's, it's technical because it, it wants to know, there's literally, there's literally a spot for 34 relatives, right? There's like, the form has open blank spots for 34 dependents. I'm like, is this for the Duggar family or someone that works in our district? Because it's like, it's so, it's so long. But, but literally, it's got, it gets into every relationship, how much, it's, it's a, it's a big form. What can I tell you? I mean-
But I, I agree with you, Ms. Haas. It's really incumbent upon the providers to have a software solution. We did receive a, an alert from Systems 3000, I think last week, that indicated that they, that they were optimistic that they'll have a, a solution. I don't know if it will meet the due date of it. And plus, this is the first year that, that anybody's doing it. So there's going to be errors, there's going to be problems. We want to make sure that, that we, that we've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is and maintain our compliance in this particular area.
Is it possible to get an early compliance date from some of these guys? Because, you know, generally what happens, coming from a pharma industry where the regulations usually take place, you, you don't, don't wait till the last minute. You put an early compliance date. So is that a possibility to approach Systems 3000 for an early compliance?
Oh, they know, believe me. Systems knows and has known it for a long time. I think the limiting factor has been certain forms haven't come out from the federal government in a timely way. So I think that that has been problematic. Also what's been problematic, and this will happen across the state, that, that we have to change certain inputs into the system in order to get the, the correct data out. So where, where a person puts down who's covered under their plan and, and puts it on the application that goes to the state health benefits plan, some of that information is now going to be populated into these new tax forms. And it's not necessarily the case that all districts have actually inputted that information that never had to be inputted before. So it's going to take a process, I'm sure, for, for at least a full year for all New Jersey, and I can only speak for, you know, our district, but for New Jersey districts to kind of get into the loop. But, you know, this is a major, major shift in how, in how the back office is working. So, and it's additional work. I mean, there's no, there's no way around it at this point. But we wanted to communicate to the board that our professionals have indicated a, a 12-minute timeframe for each of these, which is just, is, is extraordinary to spend that type of time on this, this particular issue. I hope that it doesn't happen. I hope that we're able to at least populate some of the data into the form and then handle-
Imagine seeing there an hour and getting five names in, getting five employees in in an hour. Seems slow. But the form is that, there was that much to the form.
Oh, you saw the forms.
I saw it.
Yep.
Ridiculous.
I just wanted to clarify that.
I was just trying to do that. That's, that's, that's five weeks of continuous work.
Yeah, five, yeah.
Eight-hour days, five days a week for our district. That's new regulations.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions with regard to either the Education Operations Committee reports? I have a, I have a quick one. Clarification, I think you, I think you said it implicitly, but did we get a, in the Operations Committee, we got a ruling back from the state with regard to those two projects, if they qualify for that?
Yeah, each, each of the projects-
I don't think you said it explicitly.
The turf field and the paving both qualify for 40% debt relief assistance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mrs., or Dr. Swanson?
I just wanted some clarification on the minutes. It said that a discussion took place regarding strategic planning, but the other committee minutes actually had what that discussion entailed. These did not. Did you have that discussion or?
Well, Mrs. Haley left for work. Mr. Cohen was absent. Mr. Kinst, I think, was still on the phone. And I, and we spoke briefly about it.
So some of the ideas, some of the ideas were, there was a new high school with added features. One concept was having different configuration of the current schools to have more concentrated of smaller grades. There was also a concept of having a magnet school, which could be K through 8, which would be by, by application or by lottery. I'm trying to think of some of the other concepts that were-
Yeah, I think we just, we, we, we didn't limit to, to operations areas. We just threw out some ideas, just Tom and I threw out some ideas because it, we, we didn't spend a lot of time on it, but like, like Tom said, we just said, I, I threw out the idea, well, maybe we can have, and I've always been reading all, all through the years that, how well K through 8 schools do in different settings. That's been documented, that, you know, K to 8 schools have success, you know? Maybe it was a, maybe it was only for a time, maybe they're not doing so good now. I don't know. But I said, hey, maybe we can have a K to 8 school. I brought that up, that idea a few times over the years. Also, if we were going to do a reconfiguration of schools, like I've always said, you can't, to, to solve the problem of disparate class sizes from one school to the next, you need like 8 to 10 sections in each grade, 8 to 10 classrooms in each grade to do it at, at a minimum. You can't have three to five classrooms in each grade at six different elementary schools and have equality of class sizes throughout the district. You need about, so maybe you need just some, some, some schools have like kindergarten first and second, and the other elementary schools have three, four, and five, or any other combination you could think of, something like that. So we were just trying to solve those kind of problems. That was it. Not, not much.
Okay. Mrs. Haas?
Those issues unfortunately are only a problem in regard to saving money, but in terms of keeping schools as neighborhood schools, there are advantages to keeping things the way they are. You know, back in the olden days, we actually went K through 6 or K, K through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. And having lived through that, I think that people have more feeling for their local school when they're there longer and when siblings can go to school together and stuff like that. So I, I just would hesitate to look at that issue as solely a financial issue.
No, I agree.
And this was with all, with all the, all the committees, this was a brainstorming exercise to see what different ideas, which we had one earlier today with administration, and we're going to have four more with the community over the next two months. So that, this is to get that going.
Oh, I have a question for Mrs. Haas.
One more operations question. In relation to the items that we're presumably going out for a referendum for, I haven't seen the long-range facilities plan in a long time. And I'm just wondering whether or not there were other high-priority projects that are not being considered?
I don't-
Are these the two highest priority facility projects for this district?
In fact, I think Mr. Mumu was working on this, this week on, on the, on, I guess, items 3, 4, 5. I don't know if you're ready to report that, maybe not tonight. I don't want to make you uncomfortable because I know he was meeting with his staff. I don't know, was, I don't know if that it was in conjunction with any long-range facility plan that we have previously approved, but I know you're working on 3, 4, 5.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Julyam. And Mrs. Haas, I think that the, the turf, the useful life of the turf is a priority because there's a safety concern that once we do those tests, and we have done a few tests, the turf becomes unusable at a certain point. We went through the process of vetting it through professional vendors that test the surface of the turf, and we were told that basically we're lucky if we get a year or a little bit longer than a year, but the useful life of it becomes a question and safety becomes a question. So for the long-range facilities plan, we do prioritize safety. That would be a, a safety concern. We have other projects in the long-range facilities plan. We will then have to vet that through the Operations Committee. The middle school paving lot is absolutely a safety concern. That ice is up. It's a sheet of ice in the wintertime. So I think both projects are certainly safety issues that we're addressing, and we have others. So to say to you that these are the two top and there are no others, we have plenty of others that certainly we'll share with the board, but those have, have risen to the surface, so to speak, and they have to be addressed.
But now we're adding another million dollars to the capital reserve, right? And that will just make that money avail, less available for any of the former projects? Or am I misunderstanding this?
They would qualify.
No. I'm- No, that, maybe I'm not understanding your question. So we had, we had a certain amount of money in the capital reserve account before the million, maybe half a million or something.
Yeah, we had about-
And then we're adding a million. And what our, our needs for the, our 60% portion that we would have to cover for these two projects is something like 1.2 million.
It is, 1.2, exactly.
1.2 million, leaving now more than $300,000, I believe, in the, in the capital reserve account, which would only be for capital projects.
But that includes this year's donation to the capital reserve.
Yes, the 1.2.
Which otherwise might have gone to other projects. See, I, I thought these projects were going to be covered with what is in the capital reserve yesterday.
No, it was, it was never going to be covered, what was in the capital reserve yesterday. It was, it was, it was always going to be to add, we were hoping it would come earlier than now. At, on June 30th, what would we be able to add? And I was hoping that we would be able to add, you know, $300,000 to put with, I get maybe a half a million dollar-
800 was in there.
Right. To, so that we would, and but I, and we thought that the projects would be much less expensive. Then that called into, once we found out the projects were going to be much more expensive, we were pleased that we had more excess surplus than we thought we had. In fact, not only to cover the projects, but to leave another balance greater than $300,000 after those projects are paid for. Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know if I'm not explaining it. Are you, I mean, you may, you may disagree with it, but I just want to make sure I explained it correctly.
It's not an agree or disagree. It's just a question of where are we going to go when the entirety of things that need to get done in this district need to get done? So.
Well, I, I think we've been pretty good about having-
So profound.
To make it, making a decent-sized deposit each year. It's just so, like I said a few months ago, that it was just, you know, tough luck that both of these expensive projects came up the same year. If they, if they were staggered, I think we'd be right on the mark. In fact, we're okay right now.
I mean, historically, we, we put money into the capital reserve every year, except for the, the one year, but we had the ESIP to cover it. And during the budget process, we prioritize what capital projects need to be done and then pull from that, and it goes to the prioritization. So, you know, at the beginning of this calendar year, we were expecting that we probably have like 300 to 500,000 to go into the capital reserve. We thought that the 60% of the two projects were going to be close to that so that we would be able to, to pay for it with the, with the, going to referendum, a no-cost referendum. The, once the, the details of the two projects came up, the cost for that increased, but this year, we have a, a larger excess surplus, actually due to the ESIP, that allows us to fund that, and we still are going to have some next year so that we can continue our histor, our practice of, of identifying and prioritizing and trying to get as much capital improvements.
And Tom, maybe I can explain, maybe, maybe I can explain why we were able to make such a large deposit this year. As you know, with the energy savings improvements that we made, we're having much less costly energy bills, and we're realizing much, now that the savings from that lower energy bill needs to be used to pay the debt service on the 16, 18-year loan that we took, whatever that was, except for the first year. In this first year, we don't have to make a payment, but we still have the savings. So that was several hundred thousand dollars more in excess surplus than we had thought, which was a good thing because we didn't know that paving project was going to be so expensive. So we sort of, it sort of bailed us out, having that one year thing. So I wouldn't expect another million-dollar deposit next year, certainly, but we'll see where we go.
Okay. All right.
It's fun.
That closes.
Yes, it's fun.
All right. That concludes the committee reports. And I'd like to open it up to the public. This could be for new business or action agenda. Do we have any, anybody?
Do we have anybody from the public who wants to speak to the board?
I'm here to talk about three different items with you. First, the dyslexia policy. Second, the allergy policy. And then second, I do have a couple of questions about the class size. Last month, I spoke to you all about the dyslexia policy, the proposed policy. I gave you statistics about dyslexia and an overview of the programs that were within the district. And I asked that the district provide a better set of programs to allow for adequate progress for our children. I see that what I asked was not incorporated into the policies, and I'm urging the district to change their policy. The law currently stands where teachers and related staff only need two hours per year of education on dyslexia. I see that that was reflected in your policy, and I urge the district to do better than that. We're better than that. We're cutting edge with many other programs. We're known for our technology. Let's be known for our dyslexia policies as well. With the amount of students that we have with reading learning disabilities, I'm asking that we have more than two hours a year of education for our staff. I am asking for other programs to be considered, other than Wilson, because not every child's response to Wilson. I'm looking at the expert piece of this, and I'm asking what training would that expert have in dyslexia? Is this going to be a certified Level One Wilson person only? Is this going to be a certified Level Two Wilson person only? What is going to be their training on how they recognize students with dyslexia, and the different types of dyslexia, and how to remedy those different types of dyslexia? I'm concerned. The gap is growing for many of our kids, and if we don't do something to address this gap, it's not going to be fixed. The gap's going to widen, and our kids are going to continue to not be able to read. I'm asking for help, not just for my own children, but on behalf of all 1,500 approximate other students with dyslexia in the district. I'm also asking about the policies. I noticed that some of the policies haven't been distributed yet, and there are certain policies and regulations that are supposed to be distributed annually to all parents in the beginning of the school year. Last year, certain policies were finally distributed on September 19th, but without the Regulation 5331. When do you plan on distributing the policies and regulations to the entire community? It's four weeks into the school year. I'm concerned. I can tell you, I don't have children with life-threatening allergies, but I know enough to not send in my kids with certain allergies, certain allergen foods. I didn't send my kids in with peanut butter the first day, but there are other allergies that I didn't realize. I could have sent in a kid, I've got a kid with an avocado allergy in their classroom. I was not aware of that until several days into the school year. Had that kid had an anaphylactic issue, that would have been something on me, because I would have sent my child in with that food. These are things that parents need to know, and I'm wondering when that policy is going to be distributed. Then third, in response to the class size, we asked last year for class size to be lowered within the second grade at Hillsborough Elementary. It was not done. My child is now in a classroom of 26 other children. He has an IEP. There are several other children in that class with an IEP, and as wonderful as his teacher is, I'm wondering how can she truly do her job well if she's got 26 children in there and one classroom aide? Had there been another classroom teacher, which truly should be done in a co-teaching environment, which is part of the law for least restrictive environment, I wouldn't have any issue with it. But we don't have a co-teacher in there. There are no co-teachers, no true inclusion for our children until third grade. So you've got 26 kids in this class, several with IEPs, and one classroom teacher and one aide. When are we going to reduce the class size to allow for teachers to do their jobs better? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sladek.
Had a couple of questions. One is, it looks as though that one is, or that Snapple one back there, is that sponsored by Snapple? I just wonder, because it's very loud, and it's hard to hear in these meetings.
Not sure, but thanks for letting us know about how, what the sound is, the decimals of it, thanks.
Okay. Just also was wondering with the turf, I think that the original one, I heard, might have been paid partly by ShopRite. They might have been a big sponsor back in the day. Does anyone know about that?
A large portion of it was paid for privately, through donations.
Are you going to be looking into donations, or have you looked into donations for this time?
The administration has been encouraged to look at private funding as well, to help offset the cost 60%.
And that'll be done even, like, so you'll just move ahead, but then you'll still look for donations?
Yes.
Okay, great. Also, I think that I heard, maybe it was with the ESIP plan, that you don't have any payments this year, and they'll start up the following years? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So is it, is it like mortgage interest? If you don't pay your mortgage for a whole year, then it builds up? Or is that just deferred? Like, will we be paying more by not paying it now?
No.
Okay, that's good. And then also, I couldn't hear everything that you were saying, but I know that you had the meeting at 6:30, and you had little breakout sessions. Will you be putting the top pieces on a website, the top ones?
Yeah, so for all the meetings that are associated with the strategic planning process, we will have minutes that will catalog everything that gets written down, and they will be posted on our website. So that shortly after each of the community input meetings and the input meetings that happened earlier today, those will be available to the community, so they can see what members of the community or various stakeholders have put down for, you know, different possibilities for the district.
Okay, great, thank you. And did you just already go through the top ones during this meeting?
No, we did not.
Could you just say a couple of the top ones?
I'm going to let the, I'm going to let the meeting minutes be generated, and then we'll just post it that way.
Okay. I think I heard that full-day kindergarten was a top priority on, across a lot of them, though.
These weren't, these weren't top priorities, these were.
Wish lists?
That's a good way to characterize it, yeah.
Okay.
It was a brainstorming exercise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other public comment.
May I just address a concern that a community member expressed about notification of required policies and regulations? Those are distributed through the, through the calendar that you have. If you look through the calendar, you'll see that there's a list of required policies and references to our website, where they can be pulled down, which satisfies the district's responsibility for notification. It is correct that there was a regulation that did not appear on it, that should have appeared on it. We work with a policy provider called Strauss Esme. There was a mistake made there. That mistake has been corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve professional travel-related expenses, approve a new textbook and novels as reported out of committee, new science curriculum, as well as approve the model screening for new ELL students, approve overnight trips, out-of-district placements, and a LEAP program, field trip destinations, and approve the dyslexia screening policy 5339.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A11 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Gotcha.
Any discussion? Dr. Saasan? Actually, first, do we have any separations? Okay, I'd like to separate out item A5. Dr. Saasan?
My question is with regard to the LEAP program. We approved this several years ago when we introduced, or age de-escalated the choice, and so there was no introduction program. But I would appreciate, through the Education Committee, us getting a review of who has attended these programs, and, you know, whether or not the community is finding them useful. You know, it's a small amount of money, but it is, it is a large amount of money when you think about the potential for multiples of these adding up year after year. So I would like to make sure that the committee is finding, that the community is finding it useful before we continually approve these.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is for items A1 through A4 and A6 through A11. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillett?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Saasan?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item A5 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Discussion?
I have, just, I'm gonna, this is for a survey that is going to be performed by the, by the U.S. Department of Education, using a non-governmental research team that's done this type of research before, but it's with regard to technology, and how various administrative people, what their attitudes are, and there's a tool that they're gonna, that they're gonna test to see if it's a valid tool. I'm just principally opposed to us participating with the federal government. This is, education is a state and local endeavor, so I don't want, I don't want any of our administrative people spending any time for working on a survey. And while it's stated in here that information is confidential, but what they have requested that includes is documents, including strategic plans, documents related to technology initiatives and budgets, and in my opinion, that's, that's for us to worry about, not the feds. So as I said, I'm going to be principled opposition to that, to that item. How the rest of the board votes is, that's, the board acts as a board, so that's all. Any other?
Dr. Schiff, you want to respond to that at all?
Mr. Kins and I had a conversation about it. This was, the federal government is looking at gathering information from districts around the country that are known for good work in technology. I saw it was an opportunity to pay it forward, to share out the good things that are going on. I do understand and respect Mr. Kins's opposition, but that was, that was why we, I gave the go-ahead administratively, to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
No.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gillett?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Saasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
No.
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Continuing on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve the resignation, rescinding of the contract, change in assignments, leaves of absences, and the appointments of long-term substitute, instructional assistance, substitutes as per the attachment, six-period coverage, group changes, extra coverage, and revised mentor stipends.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B9.
So moved.
Second. Got it.
Okay, any discussion?
Just real quick, items B21 and B31, it's just a change in what was planned and what's happening out, and is this the same person? So it just looks like they were intended to have one assignment, and then it was modified. I just want to clarify if that's correct.
B21?
B21 and B31. We've got it right here.
Same name.
One's rescinded, and one's changed.
Exactly.
Okay, great, thank you. Further questions for me? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillett?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Saasan?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, I'd like to, motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item C6 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillett?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
I'm staying.
Okay. Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Saasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, that completes the action agenda. Do you have any comments from the public? Second opportunity. Okay, seeing none. New business comments from the board? Mr. Gillett?
Yeah, just real quick. So on the dyslexia policy, I know we had, we had to pass the policy. The policy, to me, though, is a floor outlining our legal requirements, basically. I know in some areas, we already do more than legally required, but we had much public input on this. We don't have that much public input on most of the policies, but we had a lot, including people who came up to me at a public event yesterday and tapped me on the shoulder, whoever they were, and said, you can't pass that dyslexia policy. You can't pass it, you can't pass it. So to answer to them, I'd like to say that I'd like to see us do screening earlier. I know I can't direct you, Dr. Schiff, to come up with a plan, like, and say, yes, I'll do it, but can we see about doing earlier screening? In the long run, an earlier screening might save us in dollars and cents, if it's a dollars and cents issue. And I know you understand that also. So I know that, and I don't know a lot about the dyslexia, the problem, maybe it's screened differently for first graders than you would do for second graders, the different training required. I mean, I, conceptually, I understand all that, but maybe we can do something, because a lot of people have come up to me about this issue, and I'd like to see us, you know, consider the policy a floor, work to get above it, and work to help some of the kids that need help. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm not sure that there's clarity in the community on how much screening we already do, even before the policy was implemented. We have instituted the ERLA assessment, and Dr. Antunes, you can talk just briefly about this, where we're looking at fluency, we're looking at vocabulary development, at phonics and phonemic awareness, and we're really drilling down very early. We also classify in the district close to 15% of our students, which is slightly above where the state average is. Most of those students, the balance of those students, are children that have difficulty reading. We also provide services through our
I know I can't direct you, Dr. Schiff, to come up with a plan, right, and say, "Yes, I'll do it," but can we see about doing earlier screening? In the long run, an earlier screening might save us in dollars and cents, if it's a dollars and cents issue. And I know you understand that also. So I know that, and I don't know a lot about the dyslexia, the problem, maybe it's screened differently for first graders than you would do for second graders, the different training required. I mean, I conceptually understand all that, but maybe we can do something because a lot of people have come up to me about this issue, and I'd like to see us, you know, consider the policy a floor, work to get above it, and work to help some of the kids that need help. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I, I'm not sure that there's clarity in the community on how much screening we already do, even before the policy was implemented. We have instituted the ERLA assessment, and Dr. Antunes, you can talk just briefly about this, where we're looking at fluency, we're looking at vocabulary development, at phonetic and phonemic awareness, and we're really drilling down very early. We also classify in the district close to 15% of our students, which is slightly above where the state average is. Most of those students, the balance of those students, are children that have difficulty reading. We also provide services through our ASI program, our academic support program, where in most districts that I've worked in, we staff maybe two full-time people per building in our district at the elementary level. Here, we have five times, even six or seven, ASI teachers, and that is the right way to resource our, our early childhood needs. So this district, this board, has made significant investments to addressing the needs of our earliest learners through special education programs and design, through our ASI supports, and through the investment in the ERLA training as well. So there's a lot that's already going on that went on before we even had this particular law. I don't know if you wanted to add anything on the ERLA.
Okay. And then from a, I mean, from a, then from a board process perspective, we've solicited input from the, from the public. We received it. We actually sent it back to committee, so it was reviewed once and then sent back, and then that culminated in the vote today, which the board acted, approved unanimously, so. But thanks, thanks for the input. Dr. Sasan?
Greg, we, we did discuss this in committee, as Tom said, and we actually said, asked the same questions, and, and Dr. Schiff and, and Dr. Antunes both answered that we are doing way more than that policy. The policy is really, you know, just what is required by law. It's the second year that the training is in place, and so as things develop, they're going to adapt basically best practices and continue to push as they do for all the students.
I appreciate that, okay.
That also doesn't mean that we can't learn new programs or other things as they, as they come up, and we're not, we don't have a tin ear to the concerns that have been expressed at, at the podium here as well.
Yeah.
Any other announcements or? Okay, just coming up, we have the strategic planning sessions, the community input.